...that they're building up new ones at.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Cedar Valley City Council meeting. Please rise for the flag, Steve.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, in front of you is the consent calendar. If there's something you would like to discuss further, let me know and we'll pull it off. If not, entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar A through H.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar A through H.
Second. Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Galbreth and a second by Councilmember Waggoner to approve the consent calendar A through H. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Pass unanimously. So, okay, we will go to public comment. And limit your time to three to five minutes and state your name and address for the record. Troy's not coming. Okay. Okay, we will go to item five, and this is Proposed Amendments to the Cedar Valley Municipal Code, Chapter 17 dot 04, and this would be Jana. First reading.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. As Council is aware, the city is currently working together with the Port of Skagit and Skagit County, along with the team of consultants, to develop plans, procedures, and processes to facilitate the redevelopment of the Northern State Campus, which is currently under the state's ownership. In order to support future redevelopment activities, a planned action environmental impact statement is being utilized. And so, just by way of background, we mentioned this a few months ago, we talked about what a planned action is. These were developed about 20 years ago by the state. And it's a new category that's under the CIPA regulations, and it designates types of projects as planned actions, and it shifts the environmental review to the planning level versus the project level. So, it's intended to expedite project review once a project comes in. So, in other words, when you develop master plans or subarea plans, these are intended for large projects, complex projects, or phased projects, the environmental review happens at that stage. So that when a project, when a development application comes in to build a new building, they no longer require the environmental review. So, it reduces the permit processing time. That is the intent. So, all of that work is done upfront, all of the environmental work. And so then, essentially, when the building project comes in, the staff looks at it to make sure that it's consistent with the planned action that relies on the environmental impact statement, and it can go through the permit process without all of the appeal periods, without all the notification, all of the process associated with environmental review. So, in order to facilitate the planned actions, we need to do some work within our existing codes, or Cedar Woolley's codes. So, Chapter 290 contains the planning procedures used to administer land use and planning actions. That is the code that we're mostly focused on this evening. And in order to facilitate planned actions, we do need to amend it. Adopting a planned action ordinance and reviewing projects under unapproved planned action are two processes that will be recognized by the amendments. So, planned action ordinance. And again, I apologize, it's confusing because we're talking about a planned action ordinance and then the projects that come in and fall under the planned action. So, the planned action ordinance will occur after the environmental review is the EIS is complete. We have a subarea plan that's been adopted. Council will then consider a planned action ordinance. And basically, what that will do is it will rely on the work from the EIS, as well as the subarea plan. It will list all of the conditions and criteria that development will be subject to at the location of the Northern State Campus. So, we need an ordinance to do that. In order to adopt that ordinance, we need a process within our code in 290. So, we are considering this a type six process. Secondarily, that we need a process so when the projects come in under that planned action, that they can be reviewed administratively. So, as Council is aware, Chapter 290, again, it's your land use process, and it's a process and procedures to review land use applications. There are six permit types. The planned action ordinance would be a type six. That's typically your legislative reviews that go through Planning Commission and City Council. And then, reviewing the applications as they come in, once the planned action ordinance is complete, that will be a type two administrative review. So, are there any questions about that? Again, the administrative review is a type two. It would essentially go to your planning director for review. No notification would be required. If there are other land use permits that are necessary, those would go through their process, but the environmental review would be complete.
So, the short version, in certain geographical area, all the environmental stuff's being done upfront, so later when somebody comes, you don't have to do that?
That is correct. That is correct. Yes, thank you. In addition to Chapter, or excuse me, before I go into the definitions, actually, I will go into the definitions. Both 290 and Chapter 1704, 1704 is the definitions for the zoning code, 290 also contains definitions. So, we've provided a definition of planned action which relies on state law. And those two are the same. There is another section in 290, which I will mention briefly again, that lays out the process of administrative review, so it's a new section in 290. This has been reviewed by the Planning Commission at a public hearing on May 19. We did not receive any public comment prior to or at the meeting. Planning Commission recommended unanimously to move the amendments as presented to the City Council for adoption. So, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer those. There are two ordinances in your packet, a lot of information, as you can see. We have the entire Chapter 290, which is a lengthy code, but you can see highlighted the sections that are being amended. Then we have the Planning Commission packet as well, that has all of the procedural information to back up the process that we went through to propose the amendments.
So, all the yellow is additions?
Correct, yes.
And all the non-yellow is existing?
Correct, thank you. And there are a few strikeouts where we've had to move things around. But, again, the review of the ordinance will go to Planning Commission and then City Council, so you'll be seeing that early this fall with the project that we're considering right now. And then, once that is complete, development is ready to happen, it will just come in to your planning director for review and to determine consistency with the planned action ordinance. I'd like to add that while this is a streamlined process, once the planned action is adopted, that is the intent, there is a lot of process that goes on with developing that planned action. So, the public has a very robust opportunity to be involved, to have comment, and to ensure that the environmental impacts are being sufficiently addressed.
And in fact, tonight, before we move on to the next agenda, this is noted for a public hearing.
And again, those are two ordinances, 290 and 1704. Those are the two chapters of the code that are being amended.
And just for ease of reference, under the page numbers of your memo, page 49 is the beginning of the first ordinance, and that's the one with the lengthy additions to the 290. And then, there's, on 107 is the second ordinance, which is much shorter.
Okay. And open the public hearing here at 7:10. Limit your testimony to the issue at hand. I don't have any names to call, so if you wanted to come up and speak, state your name and address for the record. And testimony is limited to three minutes. And I'm glad you're here. And I'm gonna read, I'm just gonna read the public hearings that you have, the public hearing in the newspaper that you posted here. And we got Proposed Amendments to the Cedar Valley Municipal Code, Chapter 17 dot 04, and Chapter 2 dot 90. And then, we got Proposed Amendments to Cedar Valley Municipal Code, Chapter 17 point 92. Is that on there too? That's, we're not having the public hearing for that, though.
I'm sorry. So, it's Chapter 1704 and Chapter 290.
Okay, this is something else, and why that would be there. This is made, okay. All right. Don't all rush. Anybody wanna come up and speak? Come on, Troy.
Troy Orwin, on 144 North Reed Street, Cedar Valley. I have a bias against EIS. So, one of the questions I always ask is, what's this going to cost? Is it a budget item? And what future action by the council is going to be mandated by what we do in these projects? I know there is actions that have to be taken. But when they built the bridge in Tacoma, just to digress for a minute, they spent, I don't know how many hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars in an environmental impact statement. They went down and mapped the whole area where the filings were going to go. They had to go there. I asked at one of the meetings, what's the budget for this? Oh, there's no budget. Is that true in this case, too? That's all.
So, Troy, are you asking the cost of the EIS itself?
Well, yeah.
So, the city, the county, the Port of Skagit, and Peter and Susan Janiky have pooled resources, along with the state of Washington, to fund the whole adaptive reuse process, as well as the EIS, the campus master plan, and the planned action. So, I don't actually know how much the EIS itself costs, but the total budget for the work that we're doing right now is, I think, around $650,000. So, that included $100,000 from the port, $100,000 from Peter and Susan Janiky, $75,000 from Skagit County, $25,000 from the city of Cedar Woolley, and I think we're $212,500 from the Department of Commerce. So, that roughly gives you about $600,000 in this phase. We had a prior phase where we were in another $200,000 or $300,000 for adaptive reuse. So, you know, total project cost for all this advanced planning is gonna be approaching $1 million. And on the first round, that was to map out the environmental cleanup necessary on the site, you know, to deal with the pollution in the ground. Yeah, that was about a year ago. This particular phase of the project kicked off, well, I guess, in the late spring, and will be done this year. So...
It's really advantage of doing this ahead of time in order to expedite the action in terms of all four. However, I see community sums of money invested in environmental impact statements that don't really mean anything. They're just politics.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Our primary interest in doing this, and one of the reasons Department of Commerce funded it, is the governor, in watching Boeing consider where it was gonna put its most recent assembly plant, Boeing benefited from a planned action in the Everett area that occurred in the early 80s, as I recall. And the governor looked at that and thought, well, that was pretty handy. So, you know, 30, 25, 30 years ago, that community planned for a future Everett Boeing manufacturing facility that today would be pretty difficult to permit timely. So, in competing with South Carolina, they chose the Everett facility that used a planned action process from back in the late 80s. So, the governor set aside some funds to do this type of work to attract large manufacturing operations. We happened to benefit in that there was this $212,000 available for exactly that purpose. And of course, the state's pretty excited about the possibility of 1,000 jobs locating in Cedar Woolley, and that's really what kicked us off. So, timing's pretty important for us, and in this particular environment, it's complex. You know, we have a number of natural issues to deal with, ranging from wetlands to, what's the name of that bird, swift?
Vax.
The vax swift, to, you know, issues with the neighboring Upper Skagit tribe, and then, of course, the historic component is very significant. So, all of that's tied in, as well as the things that are more bread and butter city issues, like sewer and transportation impacts and those sorts of issues. So, for Janiky Bioenergy, or, you know, they are very interested in knowing that once they begin the process of investing what could be $100 or more million on the site, that they can proceed with a plan and not have an issue that, you know, they're kinda 25% in or 50%, and then have a snafu that ends up causing a problem for their development of their project. So, that's why we're doing it. This is the first time in the nine years I've been at the city that we've engaged in this process. So, we don't do it often.
Okay. Any more comments? Okay, we will close the public hearing here.
Right, is somebody was gonna get up?
Oh, come on.
Max Mitchell, 815 Haynes. Just one question. How many job opportunities will this create?
Peter Janiky is estimating about 1,000 jobs would be located here in the Cedar Woolley location. And that's within a five-year window, although, in fairness, that's a fluid number, because it just depends on how long it takes to ramp up. This particular company, so I understand it currently has about 60 employees, they expect to have 100 employees by the end of the year. And by next year, they expect to be doing sales that are about a third of what Janiky Industries currently does, which is a 700-employee company. So, they're seeing a huge demand in the world marketplace. They have significant supports from the Gates Foundation to implement this project. And, you know, I think he's expecting, I guess, a couple of meetings ago, I asked him, well, where are you gonna do all this until the buildings are built? Well, I'm gonna have every barn around with people working, I have engineers and all the barns working, and we're gonna have to do what we've gotta do. So, very significant job possibilities.
And Aaron, is it true that, I mean, this not, it's possible that that might not be the only tenant and job producer in that facility? So, it could even produce more?
Well, that's true. Yeah, there's no question. And, of course, the spin-off jobs that come from that type of economic vitality are measurable and significant, and we'll see that, I think, towards the end of July, we'll have the Economic Impact Report also funded as part of our project, Troy, that will talk about, you know, what happens with the dollars invested. You know, and of course, from a city perspective, living wage jobs are wonderful, they're what's great for the community. They don't actually generate much in the way of tax revenue for a city. You know, unfortunately, in our state, we really reward cities with Costcos rather than Boeings. But, on the secondary side of that, all those people who are making money are buying homes, caring about parks, going out to eat, using the local dry cleaner, et cetera, et cetera. So, the hope of another grocery store, or more restaurants, or a hotel, you know, all of those things are pinned on that type of economic vitality as it spins around the community before it, you know, is ultimately shipped to, you know, China. Or wherever.
Yeah, to go back to Troy's point about the cost, you won't get any argument up here that environmental impact is expensive and something we wished we didn't have to do. What we're trying to do is scope the whole project and kill it at the beginning, so we don't get nickel-dimed 10 years down the road.
For it now.
That's right. To get approval for the, it's a holistic approach, so it's all approved. Everything that's inside the fence is good to go. And that's the point of this.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing at 7:20. And we'll go to item, this was a first reading, so there's no action. So, go to item six, is the Sewer Rate Study and Consumption Billing Proposal. Please, I miss with the Aaron.
Well, we're pleased to have Katie Isaacson back. I know all of you tend to, those of you who've been here long enough, at least, tend to grab your wallets and purses when she walks into the room.
Okay.
But Katie's here to really work through two different questions we asked her. Debbie's in the audience to answer any questions from her perspective, and of course, Mark and Patsy have deeply engaged in this process, as much as Debbie, in terms of managing the rates and the comfort with the funds and fund balances. So, we really asked two questions of Katie. One is, how have we done, based upon our last rate analysis, are we doing, is it working? You know, is what we did working? And the second question we asked is one that the City Council has raised, at least in the time I've been here, on two or three occasions. And each time you've raised it, we, the staff, have said, we can't do it. It's not technically possible for us to implement that, given our billing software. We, of course, have new billing software, we've had it for about a year now, so we've got good experience using it, and we no longer have the technical challenge with our software in implementing a volume-based billing. We do still have data challenges with our partner in providing the volume data, but it is now technically possible. So, the second part of the question for Katie is, what would that look like? What sort of options exist? What are the impacts on various classes and types of users? And our goal today is really to get that all on the table. And if you feel strongly about a direction, then input as to which option you'd like further refined and detailed would be great. If you just wanna take the data home and think about it, then we can proceed at the next meeting with further conversation, or at such time as you want to follow up. There is no urgency. We had just committed to the council that you would have this option available to you this summer. So, without further ado, here it is. And here's Katie.
Thank you. For, I see there's new council members here, so I would say welcome, or maybe it's nice to see you. And there's been a lot of things going on in the city. It's very exciting for me to come and see all the improvements that have happened around the city, not just in the sewer, but the transportation, and there's just a vitality to the city now, which is fantastic. So, as Aaron said, I'm gonna go through three types of questions here tonight. First, we looked at whether the rates are sufficient to meet the basic needs of the sewer utility. Then, we wanted to go back and look at what we said in 2013, and the directions that was taken by the council. One was to be sure that we increase the rates every year by the CPI inflation. And the second was to adjust the connection charge. We actually lowered the connection charge to $6,995 to see how that is working out. And what we had said in 2013 is, we really have to look every year, which you do during your budget. And then, the third one would be to go to the volume-based rates. So, overall, I like to have pictures, to not have so many words, and see if we can tell the story with pictures. So, what do your sewer rates pay for? You have three funds, three primary funds in your sewer, for those that aren't too familiar. Your Fund 401 is your sewer operating fund, and most of the activity happens there. You have a sewer Fund 402 that's a reserve for doing improvements at the plant, and then a Fund 410, which is for your major capital reserve, your connection charges go into there. So, in the picture here, what do rates pay for? Your rates are collected and go into your operating fund, so Sewer 401. And the blue portion at the bottom is your main portion that you pay for, those are your operating expenses. The orange is your capital outlay from rates. So, a certain amount of money, every year you have a program for other, for replacing equipment and machinery, doing main replacement, or, you know, repairs that need to happen, those types of items. Then you have debt service on top. And the city has two primary types of debt in the sewer utility. One is a revenue bond that was sold originally back when you did improvements to the sewer treatment plant. The great news is that is due to be paid off here in the next few years. Rates and connection charges will stop contributing to pay for that in 2017, will be the last year. And then, you have specific debt reserves that are set aside to make those last two years of payments. Okay, great. Then, once that debt is paid off, we are going to start a reserve for your next treatment plant. And that's this little tiny sliver that you might not be able to see. But, that's the point, is, once the debt gets paid off, then we will start setting money aside, so you can borrow less the next time. What we know is a primary driver in your rates and in your fund balance, in your overall fund outlook, is what, how many new connections are coming in? Now, in 2013, when we reduced the connection charge, it was calculated based on the cost of the critical sewer interceptor project that has been completed. We were able to reduce at that point. But what was on the council's mind at that time was, it was, remember the recession, there was no new construction activity going on, and the question was, what can we do within the utility to make it look better, more attractive, to attract businesses to come, homes to be building, and so on? And we set aside what we thought was fairly conservative at the time, was, you know, between 15, 20, and 25 new connections. So, the blue line, if you're looking at your packet, the blue line is your 2013 financial plan. And you see that it stepped up. The red line that looks like a check mark here is what actually happened. Where we planned on 15 and 20 new ERUs, we call them equivalent residential units, you actually got in eight, 13 in the first year, then eight. Your budget for this year was prepared with nine new ERUs. The great news is there's a lot of activity happening in the city this year. I think approximately 22 have paid to date, and given the activity that's in the pipeline, we're estimating the top of that red line, that there will be 45 ERUs in this year. Then, we drop it down to 30 for next year and go back to our 25 every year in the future. So, if this holds true, that is good. I mean, the money comes in and helps you pay for your debt payments from the connection charges and meet your obligations, so rates can go to building up reserves, taking care of the improvements that you need. The other item that is of importance is your rate increase for CPI. And what we did in 2013 was estimate that the inflation would go up by 3% per year. And so, we were increasing the rates in the model by the same, and that was around $1.40, $1.50 per month in each year. The actual activity that we've seen, that the CPI has been less. Where we called for $1.43, $1.47, and $1.52, we actually had $1.43, 77 cents, and $1.10. So, our rates did not go up as much as we projected at that time, and what this says... And what this says is that with your rates adjusting by CPI, you don't have a pre-planned number. It gets adjusted by what actually the CPI is. And our test was to look at this, and yes, your rates are tracking and you're able to continue on that. That seems to be working well. So here's a picture, yes?
Why, why would your connection fees go up with CPI?
Your connection fees --
That's a choice by the council.
That is a choice by the council.
Because, I mean, I like a CPI myself. I never --
You would want to do a calculation each year? I don't believe you can put in and --
It screws everything up.
You have to take action each year to do that. Yes, you can, and you have to take action each year to do that. Which you do with your rates right now.
Intentionally lower.
So --
Raise. The monthly, you might as well raise the --
The picture --
The logic's the same.
Over here is, I have run two scenarios just to demonstrate what's happening. When your sewer connections were much less than we anticipated, the budget shifted and all of your Public Works Trust Fund debt is being paid for out of rates, or was being paid for out of rates. Originally in our plan, we said that the first $150,000 of your Public Works Trust Fund debt would be paid for by connection charges, but they weren't coming in. And so your budget shifted to have everything come from public, from rates. If we continue this, there is a deficit in each of the years. It's not large, it's about 1%. But in the end, what has happened is you have used the amount of money in your fund balance to make the utility whole, and you have warnings in every year. That warning means that you are below your target minimum reserve balance. So as a result of the limited connections, you've been using up your reserves to avoid having to increase rates more. The second alternative, then, was what if we transferred, we took the first $100,000 of the Public Works Trust Fund loan payments from connection charges instead of from rates? And when I looked at this option, this solved our problems for the first three years. There's still a slight imbalance in 2018 and 19, but our, your warnings are gone, so your reserves are there. You have enough revenue coming in to meet your 401 payments. And this is with the rates increased by CPI. Then I wanted to look and show you what happens in your Fund 410. Your sewer facilities Fund 410 is where your connection charges go and where your debt payments actually come out of. We transfer the money from rates into here. And with $100,000, with our scenario B, $100,000 coming from connection charges and our estimates of what happens, we see that we will have to dip into reserves in the first two years of the plan, but that we remain above our target minimum balance. So this is doable. And what this means is that Patsy will be looking throughout the year and determining whether, how much of that transfer would be available to be made. And Mark and Patsy and Aaron continue every year to look at the budget time to make sure that things can work out and remain in balance. So my conclusion on rates is that you will continue with your tight belt. This is, there's nothing extravagant in here. There's not increases to bring in new things that haven't been there before. That you'll continue to set aside and make these transfers into the 402 fund for repair and replacement. You're going to continue these annual increases for CPI. And it's most important to continue to review and monitor each year. So at this time, I don't see any change necessary for those. So let's talk about the connection fees. I said the goal was to, you know, attract and encourage growth in Seadrill Woolley and be competitive with the neighbors so that these businesses will want to come to your community and not the one next door. But you also need to be sure that you can pay for your facilities, and you want your new connections to help pay for the sewer improvements that you have invested in. So the charge right now is $6,995 per ERU, and I don't recommend any change at this So let's turn then to the rate structure itself and get on to the volume-based rate. So as a reminder, here's what your existing sewer rate structure looks like. Your residences pay a flat rate per month. It's $56.55 per dwelling unit. This includes apartments, multifamily. So for each unit that somebody is living in, you pay the flat rate. It doesn't vary by the amount of water. On the commercial side, however, they pay the same base rate, and they get 750 cubic feet in that of water. And after that, any overage is charged, a volume rate at $5.31 per 100 cubic feet. In order to do this, the PUD provides water service and provides the water usage data to the city. That's already happening on the commercial side. And what we know is there's a time lag there. On the commercial, if the PUD provides water service from July 29 to September 29, you get the records, and the first half of that is billed in November, and the second half is billed in December. So if you think about having variable rates, especially on the residential side, as a price signal to conserve more, it's a little troublesome that there's such a lag by the time they get their sewer bill. They've used the water in, you know, August and September, but they're not seeing the change in the sewer bill until November and December. So that's something, that's an implementation thing to think about. So the next question we like to look at is, with, given your existing rate structure, how does it look by customer class? When we look at the percentage of the pie by your customer class, on the left is usage, so how much water is used, and on the right is the annual revenue that's coming in. The top is for a 12-month period, and the bottom is just for a winter period. And when you look at it closely, it looks like it's just a repeat of the same pie chart. You're very close. There's, you know, 1% off here and there, but it's essentially pretty close that your rate structure and the revenue is coming in close to the usage of the plant, of your whole plant, in terms of volume. Okay? So that's always a good place to start. Now, I wanted to talk to you about the different volume-based rate alternatives. The first one is you could go all volume charges. And I don't recommend this for a city the size of, or a utility the size of Seadrill Woolley. You have a standalone sewer utility. This works well if you're like a city of Seattle, very large. You have a much larger customer base that your averages can work out. And if somebody is, you know, goes down or a business goes out, there will be some, somebody else picking up quite soon. And when you get a smaller community, it's a little bit harder for that. So I don't recommend all volume charges. The middle one is base and volume for all customers. Right now, you have base and volume for your commercial customers. So this would be to have your residential customers also pay a variable bill that would be based on the volume that they use. You could have, include a certain set of volume, and you could specify that. On your commercial right now, you get 750 cubic feet in the base. When we did all the consumption analysis, what we found was today, in, you know, recent two years, your average residence uses 550 cubic feet. So one question would be, if you stayed with a similar, would you adjust that definition for commercial? So the first 550 cubic feet is included in the base. So the third volume-based alternative would be to have a base rate plus volume that varies by the strength of waste. And when you think about this, this would be down at the treatment plant, for example. If you have a restaurant that has food preparation and such, those types of treatment uses more capacity in the treatment plant, not on volume, but on strength. The cleanliness, I mean, to clean it up is the non-technical, you know, financial description, is higher and more costly for the high strength. A low strength is always, your residential is considered low strength. If you think about, you know, flushing toilets, doing dishes, doing your laundry, there's a lot of water that's in there. There's not a lot of strength to that waste. In the medium would be bars that don't have full, full food preparation or convenience store, that kind of thing. And then what we would do is vary that the low strength would pay a lower volume rate, the medium a higher, and the high strength would be, pay a higher volume rate. So we had a good, robust discussion last week among staff about the pros and cons of volume-based rates. And what I see is as the flat rate goes up, communities start looking at the potential for volume-based rates. And everyone comes to their own conclusion. But the pros would be that the customers pay for, pay sewer based on the amount of service. And so that's a good thing. The, you have the ability to charge for strength of waste, so separating the cost at the treatment plant in a little different way. The low-use customers would pay less than they do at the flat rate. You can think of the flat rate as really, everyone pays the average. So if you switch to volume-based, those that are lower would pay less, and those that use higher would pay more. That's essentially what you're doing. The city, and as Aaron said, the city now has the possibility, the system in place that they could do volume-based billing. On the con side is, if, when I think about a sustainable utility, one of the things I like to see is predictable bills for the customers, offset by predictable revenue stream for the utility. And as we go to volume-based, we get more variability in the customer bills. They can change every month, and also in the revenue to the utility. The office staff who worked with collections was talking about collection issues are often already higher for families. And you think about who uses more water? A family would use more water than the average customer or than a one or two-person customer. And they already have collection issues, so this would be added pressure for that type. We also discuss the problem with rentals. If you have, you know, a five-member family is in there this month, and two months when you actually get the volume data, and now there's a two-person, two people living in there, how, changes, there will be impacts there. Everyone would have to work on that. So let's talk about the alternatives. We looked at lots of different customer samples, and I did a lot of analysis, and I ended up with trying today to show you four alternatives and compare from the big picture so that you can think about what direction you'd like to go. The first is our, just to show what happens with our existing. You have the base rate for residences, flat. We pay $56.55. Everybody has the same base rate. And for commercial, after 750 cubic feet, they start paying at $5.31 per 100 cubic feet. The alternative two would be the similar, and so residence still pays the flat rate. And we would adjust the amount of volume included in the commercial down to represent the average single-family usage. The rate would stay the same, but they would start paying overage at 550 cubic feet instead of 750. The alternatives three and four, then, are the adding volume to residential. Volume, or alternative three, we reduce the base rate to $35, so from $56 down to $35. And we, that includes 300 cubic feet. And then everything over 300 cubic feet, you're paying at $9.71 per 100 cubic feet. So you can see that at the average, you'll be close to the same. If you are low use, you'll be less, and if you're higher use, that adds up quickly. I'll show you a picture in a minute. Alternative four, then, brings in the strength base. And what we're allowed to do with the strength base is essentially you're collecting more money from the higher-strength customers, and it allows you to reduce it, the rate for the lower-strength customers. So instead of 9.71 for all, it would be $5.50 for the low, $7.43 for the medium, and $9.90 for the high. So it really shifts where you're collecting the money. So let's look at a picture of residential. Across, I have three different customers going across. We have the low use, uses 150 cubic feet per month. The average residence, 550 cubic feet. And the family of four, 1,200 cubic feet. And each of these, I have the four alternatives shown. So our first two alternatives are red and blue, if it looks the same on your sheet. The ones to the left, they're the same. All these customers pay the same regardless of use. Remember, this is flat rate. And the two on the right, the purple, the green and the purple, these are the volume-based for residential. So our low-use customer will pay less in each of those. Our average residence will pay a little bit higher or a little bit lower, whether, depending on whether we have strength in there or not. And the high-use customer, the family of, would pay much more in the volume-based side. So we're, the low use gets a break, and the higher use pays much more. The next is the numbers, for those of you that like to see numbers. On the family of four, from $55 right now, up to $122 or $85. So that's significant change. The low-use customers from $55 to, stays right around 55 or drops down to 35 on the strength-based. And that's because we're collecting more money from the commercial side. The average would go from 55 up to 59 or down to 49, so depending on which one is selected. So let's talk about commercial examples. Again, the commercial, all of your commercial customers are volume-based already. It's just a question of what is that base rate? How much is included in the base? And what do you collect your, the remaining volume on? So again, we have four customers here to try to give you example. We have the office is a low-use customer, 350 cubic feet. Then we have a convenience store at 800 cubic feet, a bar at 1,500 cubic feet, and restaurant at 3,900 cubic feet, 3,500. Of these, when you think about strength, the office is low strength. The convenience store and bar, I consider medium strength, and the restaurant would be high strength. So you can see that they're all variable. But as we go more to the green and purple, we get less, the low-use customers pay less, and the higher-use customers pay more. And the, the strength base really shifts a lot to the high-strength customers because they're using more of that cleaning capacity in the treatment plant. Okay? So the commercial, then, on the numbers, this, for those of you that like numbers. So the low use, the office, would go from 55 to 40 to 38. The convenience store, from 55 to 68, to 83 or 62. So they kind of go up and down. It's -- It's, the restaurant is the high-use and high-strength. Right now, this example restaurant pays about two-hundred dollars a month. If we go to the five-hundred-and-fifty included in the base, it's two-hundred-and-twelve. If we go to the volume for everyone, it goes up to three-hundred-and-forty-five, or the strength base is three-hundred-and-fifty-one. So, there's significant differences you can see, and following tonight, if you could give direction, we could flush out, you know, one or more of these, hopefully one. So, my conclusions about the strength-based ra, or volume-based rates, is that what you're doing, because you have a system, and right now, we're, we need to collect the same amount of revenue. We're not getting more revenue, we're trying to get the same amount of revenue and slice the pie differently, or pizza, whichever you prefer. So, what this means is we're shifting burden from one class of customers to another, or one set of customers to another, and it's how you go about doing that. And then, after we select, we need to understand that there are implementation issues that need to be sorted out, so time needs to happen. Things like figure out exactly how many are on wells if we go to volume-based, and we probably want to specify how many people are living in the home, how do we figure that out? For the strength-based, we'll need to go through and look at and assign the customers to a category. You'll have to have time for modifications to the billing system. There has to be more coordination with the PUD. Apparently, they use completely different addresses than you have in your billing system. So, it's not, while one would think, great, the system is there, they're not talking the same language yet. And you'd want time to notify your customers and explain it as well. So, I'll open back to questions for you. What I'm seeking is some sort of direction. Is there an alternative that you would like to be further developed?
I would think we've got to think about, there's a lot of stuff to think about, and I would think it'd be kind of, not, not a good thing to start heading a direction now when we've had fifteen minutes to look at it.
Yeah.
But I do have a question. You said residential was average five-hundred cubic feet, and then on your base rate, you use three-hundred. Why and how'd you come up with that?
I, I set at three-hundred because some customers don't, with an average, some use less and some use more. And you can set it at what the average is. I selected three-hundred because the, at least for our purposes of demonstrating today, if you use less, you know, between three-hundred and five-hundred-and-fifty, you'd get a reduction. So, I was trying to demonstrate what happens there.
What is that, Katie?
What is the concept, Katie, that if you use the three-hundred, you're going to give the low-use customers a bigger break?
Yes.
Because if you use, if you use the current average, then that shouldn't really shift the burden around by.
Right. If, if you use the average, the low-use don't pay less, they pay the average, well, they, they'll pay the average, which they are now.
Which they're already doing, so, and you notice if you go.
So, but basically, it's an arbitrary number, three-hundred?
It's a number that would be up, I would say it's a policy number that would be up to the council, and if you look back on this slide, this is a very interesting slide. If you look at three basic classes of customer, between residential, commercial, and multifamily, we're spot-on for who's paying for the plant. So, some of the questions we've had is, is we've maybe operated under the belief that we were subsidizing, you know, one class to another. And at least between our classes, this demonstrates that we're not.
Well, I, I kind of agree with what Kevin was saying. The thirty-five dollars, that's arbitrary.
It's all, it's all.
Yeah, so we could have picked, and, and we're not seeing the dramatic difference. I mean, I'm looking at the Troy or the little, two people living in a house. I wanted to see the difference where we, you know, why do it if you're not going to get a big dramatic change for the, the senior people that live by, you know, by themselves, and they're, they feel they're subsidizing the big families? When you pick thirty-five dollars, you're not getting that dramatic difference, because automatically, they're paying thirty-five. Why don't we pick fifteen?
Well, except if you pick, and you can.
You can.
Any question, but if you look at this slide, if you pick fifteen for the low-use customers, then you're going to have to see your average residences, in fact, exceed their current bill, and your larger-use customers are going to see now a hundred or fifty, a hundred-and-fifty percent increase.
Yeah, well, that's what these guys have to decide. I don't even want to go through this process if you're not going to save, I mean, I'm looking at your saving.
Twenty bucks.
Yeah, big deal. Why would we even do that if we're?
Well, if you raised it twenty bucks, it'd be a big deal, I think that's substantial.
That's not twenty dollars a month.
Yeah.
Well, I'm looking at this sheet you gave me, and it was like ninety-nine a year. Can I divide that out by?
This is a, this is a monthly comparison, so you go from the current base to the six.
The ones I'm looking at.
So, you'd save twenty-one dollars a month if you were a low-use residential customer.
Well, that's, maybe.
Well, and, and you can adjust that, and that's where, so, everything about that makes, is the assumptions the city council makes in how you slice the pie.
You know, another thing is the public's accepting of this, of the current system, and I guarantee you, you're going to have a lot of upset people when this happens.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, everybody is accepting of what we're doing now, and, and I don't know why you want to upset the apple cart. You're, you're not going to bring in any more revenue, are you?
No.
That's not the purpose.
But the basis of it is that the revenue number is the same for current.
So, basically, what you're doing is saying, we think we need to treat some people, everybody's accepting what we have. They may not like it because you hear complaints about everything. So, everybody accepts what we got now, so let's tip up the apple cart so we can, so we can think that we're fair to some people. That, to me, that's looking for trouble.
Well, the reason we did this is because we have continually had people come before us saying, when are you going to go volume-based because it's quote, "more fair"? So, I, I'm glad that we did this. I have some questions about it. The last thing I didn't understand, you said in the, in the time that was needed, you made mention of how many people lived in a residence, I'm not sure. Did you mean to say that, or did I mishear it? Why would that be important?
Related to the properties that are on wells.
Oh, oh, that was in respect to wells.
Because you don't have water usage data, and so that's a common way for, to try to determine, assign them how much they should be paying.
Okay.
How much usage they would have.
I understand now. The other question I have is for Debbie that has to do with the strength. Is that something that is measurable, that, I mean, I understand we have the categories, and is that measurable and real and how?
Well, it is real.
And a cost driver?
The difficult thing about physically going out and measuring each business is most places are not set up for sampling. You have to be able to sort of sample or collect a composite sample over a twenty-four-hour period, and most businesses, it's just not feasible. But there's industry standards that we would use, that's already went through this process and established for the average, for the average building that serves maybe a few items or food versus a strength of a, just domestic sewage for a home. So, we would use industry standards and place them in classifications based on the type of business they are.
Because I'm thinking, if I'm a restaurant, I'm going to squeal and say, I'm a really clean restaurant, that guy over there is the dirty one, but.
And they would have the ability, if they want to put samples in the port in at their expense, then we could go out and pull samples, and we run tests at the plant called the VOD test and the TSS test, that tells us exactly how strong a sample is. So, we, we have to do that, they have to find out that is the most real sample.
And just to follow up on that, we're not talking about toilet flushes, so a bar would have a zillion toilet flushes, it's the, it's what's in that, what's going down? Okay.
It's what's in it, that's always the strength.
Okay.
And what they do, I like to share with you, if you can get better understanding, if I have two gallons of water, try to boil it, and I take a cup of sugar, and I pour that glass of water and stir it up, it's going to dissolve, and my sugar's dissolved in the water, and they just want stronger. You're going to know because they look identical. So, clearly, the one with a cup of sugar is going to take a lot more use to clean that sample than a cup that just tears up. So, this cup of water with a, or water with sugar in it, it takes more oxygen for those microorganisms to break those organics down, and that's what we're talking about, strength.
I'd like to ask a question about landlords. Today, we have set prices on our, on our sewer and our garbage, so landlords are able to figure that into their amount that they come up with for their rent. Many people today in this city are charging rent plus utilities. All of the management companies are doing that. Now, my question to you is, if this, if this is prolonged out and tenants change, how can I come up with a fair way of charging that?
Yeah, well, two, two things. One, we think we're close to fifteen-hundred households in the city who are utilizing the services but don't receive the bill. So, just to give you a magnitude of how many people are in that boat. Patsy was able to develop that number in reference to the question of getting our mailers out to the community, that's how many people we miss, you know, so those are bills going to Seattle or Everett or wherever.
Is that households or persons?
Well, it's billable customers. Yeah, units.
Units.
There are other households where both the tenant and the landlord receive a bill, but these are just ones where the tenant does not receive the bill, the landlord or the landlord's representative receives the bill.
You could assume it's a rental.
So, there would be then actually more than fifteen-hundred, now we only have thirty-seven-hundred customers-ish.
Wow. So, one-third of the town are rentals, huh?
So, you know, and there would be actually more than where the landlord pays the bill, or, or I guess you could say the tenant pays it, but there's a duplicate bill scenario. So, really, that's a business judgment issue for the landlord, because you would have no way to control how much the sewer bill would be. So, there'd be no cap on your exposure, and the property owner would remain liable for the full freight of the bill.
I think I do this in Mount Vernon, isn't Mount Vernon?
Yeah.
I have rentals there, and we deal with it.
I do that.
We have a, an amount that's covered in it, above which they pay. It's an added complication.
So, so landlord then bills the tenant for an amount in addition to the rent?
I see.
And then collects it.
Well, they don't collect the rent, they don't.
Did we, and that, what happens, like when the, you have the two or three-month lag between, and they're gone?
Yeah. Well, those are challenging to adjust, you know, that's one of the questions, and Katie highlighted the issue, didn't provide the answer. You know, that's where you get into the policy question of, do you have a reset button where when they move in, they self-declare how many people, and then we have some assumption, or do you just say, you know what, you win one, you lose one? This time, it was a family of four, turning to a family of two, next time, it's going to be a two going to a four. As far as the system's concerned, it all averages out, but for those two transactions, there was a winner and a loser.
Easy.
You know, it's, it's a policy question for the council.
And as a landlord, you get for, on trash, there's times where my people put out trash, and I get dinged, and I yell at them.
What additional costs are there to the city in just bookkeeping a more complicated system?
Yeah, well, that's the answer to that.
Excuse me, after it's up and fully operational, I don't think there will be a huge extra cost, depending on how complicated of a scenario we end up with. You know, I mean, if we have to call all of these well users monthly or every six months and say, how many people in your household now, or, I mean, you know, it depends on how complicated it is, that kind of thing would take time. The initial setup will take a good amount of time in that we have to try and figure out the addresses, we have to put in the PUD meter number into our system in a different field so that the two can connect and talk and, and we can actually bill. I've talked to Erin about it, we will need a temporary person in our department for a few months, I think, in order to get it going.
And what about any ongoing issues with data every other month as the data dumpster occurs?
Our software company, accounting software company, has adjusted, just so you know, PUD has some folks in town that they bill monthly, and a good many that they bill every other month. And so, the monthly ones are quite easy, we kind of have to run those separately from the every other month one. What the system does is it takes the usage for two months, divides it in half, so the customer gets an identical bill for, you know, two months in a row, and then the next two months, we get an identical bill, because that's about our only choice, making bimonthly, go monthly. I strongly believe that our utility bills are at the dollar amount, that it would not work to bill every other month. I think our collection problems would be horrible if we did that. People one month would go, oh, right, I've got an extra a hundred-and-twenty dollars, and it's gone, and then the next month, they're short, they can't pay the full bill, and I think we'd have a lot more collection issues, a lot more foreclosures. So, I do want to continue with that monthly billing.
Yeah. How do, how do we, everybody pays the same, low rate, seniors?
Oh, yeah, we forgot to mention that, of course.
That works into this too somehow.
Current, in our current structure, the seniors who are low-income, which is those seniors who are qualified for property tax exemptions, pay thirty percent less than everybody else. So, regardless of whether they're low users or high users, in fact, regardless of whether they're a family of one or a family of ten, if the property owner is a senior who makes less than thirty-five thousand a year, then they pay thirty percent less.
So, if we set a scenario of thirty-five dollars, they would pay thirty percent of that less?
Well, that's a question for the city council. That is our current policy, that's entirely a council policy. So, you can have a senior rate, you cannot have a senior rate, it's up to you.
Would that work into what you've already, would that work into it already? I mean.
Is that in the model? Or, well, there isn't really a.
Looking at the revenue, I assume that you continue to have low-income seniors at a thirty percent discount.
That's only if they own the property.
Right.
I have a question about water usage. This is all based on water usage to fund.
Money pays it off.
The sewer, but what about those customers who aren't, they're using a large volume of water, but it's not all going into the sewer, such as above-ground pools, or large gardens, or flower beds, or something like that? Would there be a way they can appeal their bill?
Yeah, there's, there's usually two ways that's handled. You know, one, for a customer that has significant outdoor water usage, they buy a separate meter from the PUD. So, they buck up the freight for a PUD meter, it's an irrigation meter, and then what the city's able to do is not bill sewer for any of the irrigation meter usage. The other way that's done is you make assumptions that there's more water usage in a certain time of year, and you don't use that time of year for the billing. But I pulled this slide back up because Katie looked at that, and if you look at the bottom, the bottom is winter, the bottom two slides are winter usage, so excluding summer, and the top is twelve months, and there's virtually no shift. And in fact, if you start drilling into individual accounts, some of them use significantly more water in the winter than they do in the summer. So, unfortunately, you know, water is not a perfect analog for sewer consumption. It's not technically feasible to meter sewer, so it's the best you can get if your objective is to have a user, you know, those who use pay-based system.
Who does that?
And, and again, if, you know, if you do a lot of outdoor watering, you just have to know that it's kind of not fair for you when you're doing that. That's, that's just the way it is.
And then you've got to check the people that drink a lot of beer.
Well, I was thinking, I'd, I'd put in a big cistern and start flushing toilets utilizing rainwater.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that way, I don't use PUD water.
Uh-huh.
And then I could get a better deal.
But you're saving a fish.
And actually, I'm joking, but that does raise a point. It's something Katie built into the model, which is, when you start charging people based upon consumption, people will use less. You know, and even with a four-month lag, I guarantee you, take somebody who gets a $56 bill today, and you give them a $150 bill tomorrow, they're going to go, oh, my gosh, we need to use less water. We've got to make our PUD bill go down so our city sewer bill goes down, which then drives our revenue model to require rate increases. So you have to build into the model some assumptions about conservation that then drive rates up because we still have to have X amount. And that's kind of the only constant through any of your rate policy decisions is, at the end of the day, every year, the city utility has to have $3.5 million or whatever the number is. And who pays, how it gets paid, when it gets paid, all the questions. You've got tons of options, as long as every option leads to the same answer, 3.5 million, 3.5 million, 3.5 million.
Well, philosophically, and I hate to use the word fairness, but Troy, how many people live in your house? Two. Okay. I don't see why he should have to pay the same amount that I pay with my family of five. I just don't think that's right. And if there's a feasible way to level that out so that the people who use the most pay the most, and the strength thing is a new concept to me, but I'm learning about it. I think that has to be built into because that's a real cost driver based on what Debbie said here tonight. So I'd like to move forward, at least to see if we can drill down and find one that would work. It is true, this may be stirring up a lot of hate and discontent, but I think that there's a noble end in sight. If you just say, eh, everybody's the same, I mean, it feels like communism to me or something.
And for those of us that are on wells, do you determine? Patsy said, what, there's 20 houses in the city that are on wells, roughly?
According to Department of Ecology, yes.
So what, you go and you audit each one and say, are there two? How many are in your family? You determine family of two, you're going to have what? Six toilet flushes a day, couple showers, five loads of laundry a week? Determine how much flow you've got there? How are you going to do a base?
Or you just pick an average. I mean, that's a council policy question because, of course, a family of two, where it's two adults who both work all day, is going to be different than two retirees who are home all day versus, you know, on and on and on. So, you know, that becomes something where, you know, we would look for direction from the council on how do you treat them? You know, they're not going to be treated the same as everybody else in the city, and maybe they just pay their 56 bucks like they always have, and they're probably just as happy for it. You know, I don't know. That's another policy question.
Sounds like you're going to have six or eight balls juggling in the air, constantly changing. You have absolutely no, you don't know what the future brings. You're going to have constant change. Right now, you have steady, you can count on your income, and her report on what's been going on sounds reasonable, and you change to this variable stuff. You're going to have balls flying all over, you're going to constantly be changing rates. It doesn't seem to me to make sense. Far stability goes.
Mount Vernon already does this, correct?
Yeah, I think they're in maybe their second...
Second year.
No, no, it must be more than that because it happened when Bud was there.
Have you talked to them?
What Mount Vernon did is a little different. They took a 12-month water usage for each house, divided that by 12 so that your bill was the same each month.
Oh.
You know, they also have substantially more expensive software than we do. Burlington does the, uses the PUD water rates and changes, you know, they bill every other month as PUD bills every other month.
But their rates fluctuate according to usage?
They do. They also have a winter averaging.
How does Mount Vernon tackle the issue of rentals and that sort of thing then? With the usage changed so drastically with the 12-month average, do they even care?
I don't, I'm not sure how they handle change in tenants. I do know, hearing, I remember speaking to a landlord who was outraged that his sewer bill tripled on majority of his rentals. But I think they just are the same for, you know, the 12-month period, and then they readjust.
I don't mind it, you know, but it depends on your tenants.
Well, financially, right now, you have predictability and stability, and you switch systems, and you've got way more moving parts, all kinds of things that, things that can go bad, so.
But I figured this is, I've been hearing that this is what people have been asking for, is a little fairness in the way we implement something like this and that there, you know, I live alone. He lives, just him and his wife, and, you know, then it seems to me also that a bigger family would have more, maybe more means to, you know, maybe more working people in the home or even just kids that maybe not use as much. There's a lot of things to think about, I guess.
You know, that's the second time I've heard about people being asking for fairness. I've been here for a while. I have no memory of anybody coming up and bringing this subject up.
I know they always complain when the CP takes up just a couple of persons.
Really? I have no memory of...
Have you listened to Tony's plan?
No.
Tony didn't like it.
He brought it up all the time.
Tony would not like this proposal. Having viewed his own account, I can assure you, Tony would no longer like this idea.
We have, there were some people living in Clinker Mill that were, I always, I still get letters from them.
And this has come up a number of times from members of the council, and I would say there's been half a dozen, maybe, members of the public who've come in to say, hey, you know, this isn't fair, over the past, you know, nine years.
Yeah, we always said we didn't have the technology to...
And so this is the first time we've been able to take a meaningful look at it.
And if you get around, like, I think around King County, most, a lot of the cities do.
Yeah, I think most cities who have their own water utility, I don't know, this is a fair statement. I think most cities who have their own water utility bill by consumption, you know, because they control both sides of that, and it's easier for them to do it.
I would like to...
I'm not sure I agree with most. I just think there's still, the most common residential sewer bills are flat rate. More over the, say, past 10 years, there's more that have gone towards volume, but the majority are by far still flat rate residential.
Is it because they don't have the technology to do anything more, or is it because that's what they choose?
It's a hassle. Well, the hidden reason...
Probably a little bit of all of those in there.
They're afraid to do it because it's changed.
I've seen a number of studies that have been done and studied the issue, and in the end, the question of change and who's going to be a winner and who's going to be a loser is just so challenging that they opt not to go that direction.
Yeah, it's easier not to do so.
I would like to suggest that another thing that affects the amount of water usage is what kind of appliances you have. If you are fortunate to have all new appliances that are all below water, you will see a significant reduction in your water bill, which would flow through to your sewer. So you can have people in, say, an older home with all older appliances using more water than a larger family in a new house where the kids take the shower at the gym or, you know, those sorts of things. So there's lots of variations in who uses the most water.
You should throw toilets in that, too. I have, I changed out on all my stuff, and I use, they tell me I use a gallon of water when I flush. And the standard, the standard old toilets use anywhere from three to five gallons of water. So that's a lot. Because most people, you know, I don't know if most people have more than one toilet in this town, but lots of people do.
And then there's leaks.
Yes.
Then you have to buy any toilet.
Yeah, you have to buy, go get a cadet for like $120.
The leaks will never get fixed if we're on a flat rate because, eh, who cares? But if they cost you twice...
I was going to say, it's reflected in your water bill.
Well, it would cost you twice, you'd really want to get them fixed.
Well, what you do is you end up having a leak adjustment policy usually because now you're really being penalized. You had a leak, so you've got water that you didn't want, you didn't use, that went into the ground, and now Uncle Woolie wants to charge you for sewer usage based upon water that never touched the plant. So, you know, you'd end up probably developing a refund policy for that or a credit policy and having people in, you know, looking for credits on that. At least that's what I've seen in the past.
More moving parts.
So before we move on, do you want, I'm understanding that you want this on the agenda next time for continued discussion. Do you want Katie to be here, or do you want to have continued discussion, provide direction that we can pass along to Katie for further research, if that's what you so choose? Or how would you like to proceed?
We come at six instead.
I think we should think about it for a month and then decide, then make that decision.
Well, I guess I'm not asking, how do you want to proceed with alternatives? I'm asking, how do you want to proceed to think about it?
Think about it for a month and then decide whether you want her to look into anything.
You just got to have a workshop next meeting.
We can have a six o'clock meeting before a meeting because we don't have any workshops scheduled for the summer. And I certainly, I'm leaning towards one spot here, but I would like to do some talking to some people and go out and think about it and read about it. I mean, we just got this today.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, we're not asking to make a decision.
It's hard to give an opinion without, I want to study it. I want to take a look at it. I'm sure everybody else does, too.
But when would you like it to come back to the council? You want to wait till July?
There's no hurry.
Two weeks.
Why don't we wait, why don't we wait till September and do a workshop on it? There's absolutely no hurry.
Ken, is it possible to do a public hearing on something like this?
Well, it is, although I would caution you, to have a public hearing before you have actually developed alternatives is difficult, you know, because people, people won't know what to comment on. They won't know that it's something to worry about, you know? So you almost need to go down the path a little bit further to say, well, here's today, here's what we're thinking about, hey, let's talk about, let's have a town hall and talk about it.
Well, you could stick it in a utility.
Well, the easy thing would be, of course, to have a shadow bill that says if we adopted proposal X, here's what you'd pay this month, and mail that out to everybody, and you would have 1,500 people angry and 1,500 people happy and 500 people who don't care. You know, I mean, that is the downside, is it's pretty predictable.
Why don't we think about it over the summer, and everybody can talk to whoever they want to talk to? And there's absolutely no hurry to do anything.
Says the guy that wants everything the same.
So what's the consensus of the council on when you get it back? I'm hearing a month, I'm hearing September. What do you like a month?
I think a month is plenty of time, I think.
I think a month's enough time.
Well, sometime in July. So we'll work with Katie then to get a date that works for her, and we'll either do it at six o'clock or a regular meeting, just depending on the calendar.
I'd like to say I appreciate the way this information was presented. It was presented from different angles and made it easy to understand. Wish we saw more things presented that way. Thank you.
Yeah, it was really nice. I did like it.
Okay. You got what you need? We'll start with committee reports.
Well, I have a little question first. A two-part question for Katie. Why is it that they do this rating system on cubic feet rather than gallons? And for those of us that aren't too good at calculus, how many gallons are in a cubic foot?
Seven point four eight gallons per cubic foot. Sorry, I usually put them on the chart somewhere. Seven point four eight gallons per cubic foot. And the difference between cubic feet and gallons typically depends on the meters that you have, whether they're, they have them both set in gallons and cubic feet. And I don't know why things are so much cubic feet, but that's the most common, is cubic feet hundreds cubic feet.
If we talk to someone and say, well, how can we calculate where we're going to go to so much per cubic foot? You know, I don't know how many gallons, but I can figure out, yeah, my toilet does two gallons of flush, and I'm running 10 gallons in my laundry and five gallons in my shower. So they can kind of tabulate things like that. So, yeah, somebody says, well, yeah, I'm using 17 cubic feet, they're going, huh?
And the PUD also uses cubic feet.
Just look at the water.
Just to confuse the customer.
Period gallon and a gallon.
That's a good idea. And on their bill, I understand they're in hundreds of cubic feet. So if for a two-month bill, the average residence would be 11.0 CCF or 100 cubic feet. And that's the way the data came that we were looking at.
Thousand gallons every day.
And this standard used to be 100 gallons of water per day per person. That may be lower now that they're using little flushing toilets, but that person will come and want to play with that at home. If they have a two, or if they have six, that's going to be on the daily per person.
Really? Wow.
Any more? Any questions? Okay, we'll go to Chief Tucker.
I don't have anything on my vacation.
Okay. You're just here to show up.
You love us.
Carla picked him out of the house.
Patsy? Oh, Chief Clinker's already.
I don't have anything this evening, thank you.
John?
You can see at the end of your packet, there's the scoping document that was issued for Northern State. What that document shows is a summary of the comments received during the scoping period for the Northern State EIS, Environmental Impact Statement. So it's a summary of those comments, both written and verbal, and a response to some of them in very general terms, largely saying this will be addressed, or if not, this is why. I think everything, all the comments will be addressed, basically. It defines the scope of what the Environmental Impact Statement will address, and I can tell you, it's pretty much every aspect that one would expect in an EIS. There wasn't really anything that's not going to be reviewed. So that's just an FYI in your document. It's about 14 pages, and then the rest is, you know, is comments and other information appendices to that. Building Department's been extremely busy. We, I put some numbers together for the council. We finished 11 single-family houses over the past, say, six months or so in Sauk Mountain View Estates, Phase Three and Four. We have 12 units under construction, nine of those in Sauk Mountain View Estates and three others scattered throughout the city. We have 13 single-family residential permits pending, so those are under review or waiting for the applicant to pick them up, ready to be issued. We have one duplex under construction, one 12-unit apartment building under construction, and one commercial building under construction. So it's been very busy in the building. And anecdotally, it seems like we've been getting a lot of calls from people asking about whether or not certain vacant lots in town are buildable. So it appears that people are also interested in building on, in some of the infill sites throughout the city, like, you know, just a vacant lot down at Jennings Street, for So spike there. Robert, who has been helping out as a part-time building inspector, has not been able to show up because of family emergencies with elderly parents. So he's been helping out with them and not able to come in, so it's been putting an additional strain on our department. And as far, then, moving on to the other planning items, the planning commission's going to be reviewing the draft buildable lands analysis that was put together for, by our consultant, a EDH... Edie Hovey. We're, we're still in a review of, of what he's submitted, and will hopefully have a final document here pretty soon. And so the Planning Commission's gonna be reviewing land use, the land use element, and going over some of the policies for how the UGA might need to be expanded or not expanded based on the information in the buildable lands analysis. So it's been very busy. That's all I got, thanks.
Mark?
We're moving ahead with that Green Street, Virginia Dean Sewer Project contracts. You approved that at the last council meeting, and we're setting up to start that the week after Lager Rodeo. That'll complete late August. Jamison Arterio Extension Project, I'm trying to get a public meeting scheduled, just to inform the neighbors within 500 feet or so of the project what it looks like before we finalize the design. Times kept slipping away. I was intending to do it on the 24th of this month, doesn't, I think we're too close to that now. Would, would the eighth work for council? I know that's coming off of the Lager Rodeo weekend. What we're thinking of doing is having that at 5:30 in the council chambers. It's gonna be like the ones we've had in the past. We'll have displays and take questions from folks. And then, for those of you who want to attend, you can come just early for council that evening. Does that work for folks, that kind of a date? Okay, we'll plan it on that basis. I wanted to just get you up to snuff on a project that's going at DOT's level that will affect us sometime down the road. They're working with BNSF to install crossing guards at Ferry Street and at Highway Nine, similar to what you see currently at State Street, now where they have the crossbooks that come down when a train is approaching. One of the side effects of that project is DOT and the railroad have informed us that the laneage revisions that were made back in, I think it was early 2007 in that intersection, don't meet standards. Apparently that was done without requesting approval from DOT or the railroad, and it added a couple of lanes there, mainly extended the right turn lane coming off of Ferry to 20, back, you know, almost all the way to the next street down, what are Borseth, I think that is. They want that laneage to go back to the original configuration, which means it'll narrow up to the through lanes, and the turn lane to the right coming off of Ferry would, would not start until you crossed the tracks. The reason that's, that's something I have a difficult time contesting is the unapproved nature of the lane change. And also, the consequence of that is, is the existing lane is right up against the existing BNSF crossing signal standard. It does not meet any kind of clear zone requirements. Without a curb, you need to be a minimum of 10 feet, and it's about two. We've looked at it, DOT did a traffic study on it, and there really aren't very many motions making that right turn, it's a very small percentage during a day. I'm not sure exactly what drove the original desire to change that, but it looks like it's gonna go back. I just wanted to let you know that that's gonna be in the wind down the road. We're still talking with them. We're trying to use the opportunity to make sure we get a pedestrian crossing approved, coming off of the northwest corner of the signal there at Ferry Street, so that we'll have an eight-foot shoulder again, which we don't have right now because of the lane changes. So we can continue our pedestrian improvements on that when the APP site finally improves. Just wanted to make you aware of that. Any construction on that would be, as a part of that process, they're, they're changing that, and that they're telling us it's more like 2017, 18 window for that. So it's down the road ways, just wanted you to be aware of it. And beyond that, I met with the Skagit Island Technical Advisory Committee today, and we ranked the TAP projects that we submitted. And the next one that, the one that you approved for submittal last time was the next phase of the Cascade Trail from, from, basically, from Hodgins Road into Trail Road, and we actually ranked number one on that. So, those are the projects that will be funded for the period 2020 and '21. Might happen a little earlier, depending on how the federal funds become available. But it puts it in the queue. That'll be before the Policy Board at their meeting next week for final approval. That's basically all I have. There's a lot of other stuff in my report. If you have any questions on anything, be glad to take those. Thank you.
Aaron?
Don't forget, we've got that Northern State Elected Officials Tour coming up here on the 18th. I will be meeting in one of those cottage buildings where they have their office. I can't remember if it's Building D or H, so I'll, I'll just call, or otherwise get the message to each of you when I figure out exactly which meeting. So that's 2:30 at Northern State, and then at 4:30, you have an opportunity, if you like, for an optional tour of Version Two of the Omni processor at Janiki Industries down there on SR20. So, that's something that you just might want to plan for if you haven't seen it. You'll be able to tour it, not quite operational, but definitely coming together. That's it.
Rick?
I just saw your comment, Mr. Anderson, and, Mayor, and, does this, does a smokestack have to be removed? I didn't see anywhere that it does, or is that just a question?
I don't think there's any, and, I've, I've not heard any conversations about removing the smokestack.
Okay.
But you don't want to light it either.
Okay. Rick?
Community-wise, last weekend, we had blast from the past. Awesome weather, ton of people in town, no major incidents. Motorcycle show, car show, and a lot of good food, a lot of craft vendors. So I think it was a pull of Kelly, and the chamber staff is all excited about it, and had a good turnout. So it's a good positive for downtown.
You?
Yeah.
Keith?
Well, I was gonna say what Rick just said, except I was gonna congratulate Rick and our Public Works folks who made it happen, because it took a lot of hard work to have something turn out that well. It was really nice.
Brenda?
I want to thank John and whoever else was involved in getting tree-sourced to clean up that lot. They were on it. It's bare now, it looks great, and there's no hiding spots anymore for anybody. So, yeah, that's much appreciated. And I had a resident bring to my attention about this card that came in the utility bill about picking it up after your dog and so forth. And what about horses? I guess horse droppings are becoming a problem.
Yeah, I think I put a picture in your packet. Do you have a picture of, of a horse pile?
I don't think they ever got in it.
Well, it didn't, okay, I, I thought I'd sent that for the packet. We had a complaint at City Hall as well about that. It was in front of Cascade Middle School.
Yeah, that's the area that I've been hearing about.
Yeah, yeah, so, so I, I guess, just to go back to when the council authorized horses on streets and sidewalks, the conversation came up of what's gonna happen with horse maneuver. And the answer was, horse riders are not gonna dismount and pick it up, they're not gonna have baggies hanging from behind the horses, and the city does not have a horse maneuver collection crew. So, we, we don't do horse maneuver. It's just kinda there.
You just have to step around it.
And that, and that was a foreseeable consequence of the policy decision the council made to allow horse riding in the city limits.
Is there a, ordinance or a law regarding horse droppings?
No, that's what I'm saying, is that there's not, so-
Were you on the council then?
No, that was, that was before.
We had the big debate.
Not come up with this one.
Can't happen all that often.
They just don't let it happen.
Well, it's been pretty bad from what I hear lately. I don't know if you've seen it, you?
I've seen it.
On McGargo?
Yes, I have.
I've seen it.
There's a lot of people that walk there.
I was on it yesterday, and there were three different spots.
Well, it's increasing.
I, I didn't catch the horse, but-
Some horses comes out at night.
We wear the hoodie.
On the farm, so.
But they like that wide, they like that wide, that wide sidewalk.
Oh, they do it on the sidewalks?
Yeah.
Wasn't it only to permit horses through the downtown, not anywhere else in the city, right?
Sidewalk.
So they wouldn't even have-
That's not my memory. I, I, I think we allowed horses anywhere.
No, we, no, we had a squared-off area in the downtown core, and we only changed that, so it wouldn't even address this problem on McGargo.
It's allowed, it, no, we-
It's allowed citywide.
We allowed it citywide.
That's my memory as well, yeah. We can certainly double-check on the ordinance, but my recollection was that we did not restrict it geographically.
No, no, we were, we were taking the restriction off the downtown core.
No, we did the whole city.
I know, but it was, there was no problem in the city, it was just-
Oh, I see what you're saying.
There was an excluded area previous to our, our action.
I got you.
Well, it was-
Okay.
We just don't have to change those signs down there where it says, no skateboards-
You can't take them downtown.
Rover skates and bikes, and horses on sidewalks.
Horses, okay.
It was just, it was just the downtown area.
Well, so they are allowed to be on the sidewalks?
Uh, yeah.
I guess so. We didn't, they are. We didn't change it.
And they have been forever, just not in the downtown. That's what we changed.
I don't know. You'd have to talk to Lynn, or, or, I don't know, I don't wear, seen any horses at all. No, we made it totally legal. So people are doing it.
They wanted to ride their horse through the trail downtown, they couldn't. And that's what we changed. There was, there's just an excluded area that we removed.
I think they could have, but we are now allowing them on streets, and that was what I was worried about. Okay. It's a good subject, it already is, unless you guys change it, so.
Well, I also, I wanted to, to comment on the blast of the past, blast, blast from the past. It seemed like we had more people, excuse me, more people than usual this year. It was huge. I was there every single day. Friday wasn't, Friday wasn't all that busy, but I talked to some vendors on Friday who said they already made their booth fees that day, and they were looking forward to the weekend. And then Saturday and Sunday were just crazy, tons of people, and that was really awesome.
Bottom said Friday was the best day for them, which was really surprising. They've done better that Friday than they had any other Fridays at other events, and even for some full weekends. So, yeah, they were really excited for that. Saturday was a little low, slow for some of them, but overall, it was, was a good weekend.
People went camping, but they might have been here Friday.
Yeah.
Also, I had, I had one of the tree trimmer guys come and trim the heck out of my tree for the garbage truck to get by, but he didn't, he didn't actually talk to me first. I don't mind him doing it or anything, but I'm just thinking if, if they're doing that around, just, and, and, you know, he just trimmed the heck out of it, but he didn't say anything to me, maybe I would have had my own guy or something. I don't know.
I brought that up earlier, a couple of years ago. I think, you know, we can hire somebody to do it nice, or have them mutilate it. I think we should give the land owner, or the property owner, the opportunity to fix the problem.
I was there, but he, he never said anything to me, just started whacking at it.
Yeah.
And-
Is that our guys? They do that?
He said, yeah.
Must have been a bill as far as-
A garbage truck? Did you talk to them?
Yeah.
So, who was it?
It was, I don't, I don't remember his name.
Our crew doesn't do it, do they?
Yeah, they do.
Esplundy, or, he had the orange shirt and the yellow.
Yeah, our crew will do out and whack limbs that are over the rights of way. So, you know, if the trash truck can't get through, sometimes it's easier just to lop it off than go through code enforcement to get it done.
It took quite a bit. He could come back and do the poplar trees if he wants. I told him that. I got 13 of them.
Yeah.
Are you doing that for sidewalks, too?
We should.
You should.
Exactly.
So, we've started with asking, you know, asking and then enforcing the sidewalk encroachment issues.
Not at Gladys's.
How about that?
Gladys's sidewalk is now clear, a brush. We're still, we're still dealing with the vehicles parked over the sidewalks.
Yeah, see, I don't have a sidewalk there.
No.
And they, they just went and did it. But it's gonna, he's gonna, you know, maybe tick some people off. They come home from work and see that. I just happened to be there, and, you know, it's a pretty nice tree. I mean, the, PSC takes the top of it off, because it's right under, so it's already, it looks, it looks pretty sad right now.
So they cut the bottom, and the PSC asked them to cut the top?
Oh, they took the, and they, yeah, they took the whole side of it, and then the side of my plum tree that's right next to that.
Well, that one made me laugh.
I'll certainly talk it over with my superintendents. You can probably appreciate the logistical problems of notifying folks when, when we have to go out and do something like that. I'll see if there's a vehicle for doing that. We've had instances, well, Green Street's a good example. Technically, the responsibility for trimming rests with the property owner, and we had sent letters and all kinds of stuff, and they just flat refused to do it. So, we finally said, we're coming out and we're doing it the way we want to do it, and so we did. You know, and, and that's kind of what we encounter a lot around town. This is, interestingly enough, for all the trees we have, it's not a real tree-friendly city. Whenever we come out, people generally say, could you cut it off at the roots? That's generally what, that's generally what we hear, and we have huge trees around town.
And grind them, too.
Yeah. And by the way, get it out, yeah, roots out, too.
That's something I think Aspen should do. If they're gonna cut a tree down, they should get those roots out.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's all.
Yes, I will talk it with the supervisor.
Thanks. I mean, I'm sure most people wouldn't mind, even if they got some kind of notice. I wouldn't have minded if they-
And then I know somebody that'll get the firewood, if you need someone.
Yeah.
I just had one item, and I think it's, I think I should address it tomorrow, Bingham Park. You got two picnic tables. We could use a couple more picnic tables in the main deal, maybe a couple over by Murrow. It's just, I stop there and sit at picnic tables sometimes, and quite often, there's more people that would like to use a picnic table, and there's only two.
Okay, we'll look into that. Generally speaking, the Boy Scouts or one of the other service groups have done the slabs. That's who put the two that were missing. So we'll see if we can line that up. We've got, I think the tables are no problem.
Yeah. For this year, just put them out, all kinds of pain in the neck to move them to Mow, but, but it's, I like to go there and sit at the picnic table and do things, and a lot of times, there's a lot of people that would like to sit there. There's none.
Sure, okay, we'll look into that.
That's it.
Okay, motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
Second, sixth, and all those in favor stand. Thanks for coming, Troy.
Ah, thank you.
Given it might have been the city, my-